Called to order the city council work session for Seaview's Grand Forks Tuesday, April 24th, 2018 is now five o'clock. That city clerk please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Mike Parkchivinsky.
Here.
Tim Reapell.
Here.
Henry Tweetin.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does turn to McCormick. Number one, discussion on second annual Rockin' Up North Fest. Justin and Jesse, if you guys want to come up and sit by a microphone.
I can go there, one here. One there.
I can go over there. You guys can go over there. Yeah, so we were hemming and hawing all year on if we were going to pursue this again. It was fun, it was stressful, and we decided that we needed to probably find someone else to help us out, so we got in touch with Jamie at HB Sun and Light to see if he'd be interested in partnering up with us, take a little bit off of our backs, help us kind of grow this thing the way we envisioned growing it. And I guess what we came to ask is, I know last year we blocked off Fourth Street from Demers to...
Third.
Third. And there was talk last year of, okay, so blocking off Third Street from the corner where that open lot is across there to maybe the end of the parking lot behind the VFW. We were just wondering if that was something that we could potentially do this year to allow us to expand the space a little bit. We are looking at a quite a bit bigger headlining act, so we anticipate that we can attract a considerable amount of more people this year. We're retooling the event to simplify it a little bit, focus more on the beer showcase along with the music, and then more of like a food truck slash food vendor portion of it. So that was our main question, wondering if it would be possible to block that street off behind it and utilize that instead of utilizing all of the VFW's parking lot, because we are, you know, in deciding the way we wanted to go this year, they will not be partnering with us on it, so we wanted to leave them a little bit of parking left over for them to operate on a Saturday. So that was kind of our rationale for wondering if that'd be possible.
If there's any suggestions on your guys' part as far as what we could have done better as far as anything, cleanup or different traffic flow or anything like that?
I don't know, Jason's not here, but I don't think we just need local approval for the other portion of the street to close, right? Not state, because we need a state approval again, right?
Well, if you're talking about the Third Street portion, that's just the city street that would be...
That would be fine, but blocking off the corner of Demers, so didn't we have to have approval from the county or state?
I believe we did, and we had requested that, and it went through the process, and we didn't have a real issue with it.
But is there any issue with the other streets being blocked out?
Depends who you ask. There's always gonna be, you know, the traffic flow and there'll always be some concern about that, but, you know, I think our police department and public works have done a pretty good job as far as getting the barricades up, signing it to where you need to go, and how to get around it. So I think we do the same thing that we did prior to that. People will find their way around it.
Fire fighters are good if we close those two?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Might have to detour as a whole.
Okay. Is that a question?
Yeah, we did have one more. Just more of a hypothetical, wondering if it would be possible or how we would make it work to where we could possibly use the Civic Center as a contingency plan, whatever that would take, should we be, you know, five days out and it looks like it's gonna be rain consistent for that whole weekend, so we wouldn't have to completely cancel the event?
When is August 25th?
August 25th.
I guess we'd ask Reed, do we know if we have anything going on in that? Is that when the gun show is gonna be sometime in August?
No, that's in June.
June, okay.
Schedule wise, I don't see it being a conflict at all. The alcohol side of it, I don't have the answer for that, what it would take to have alcohol in the Civic Center. Yeah, I just...
In your own...
Yeah, yep.
I think we would just have to have, Megan actually knows this better than I do, I think, they would just have to make sure they have their permit to be able to do it outside.
A couple of concerns that I would really have over it, and Justin and I actually talked a little bit about it last week, is the security and the cleanup. Those are the two biggest things that we'd have to lean on outside sources for support for, because we just don't have the event staff, especially at that time of year, that could clean up from a big event that was gonna involve beer and food, and we certainly don't have the security within our profession, so.
We would already have that in place, because we would have to clean up the parking lot and have all that for the event, so we should be able to take care of that. Is ice being made already at that point?
No, there wouldn't be any ice there. It'd be dry floor at that time. The only other thing we'd have to look at from a city standpoint is that building, those of you that know well, it isn't able to be locked down 100% to keep people out of the equipment areas. You know, think about the Zamboni Room, it's just open access, you can walk right down from the main concourse and get right back into the Zamboni Room and all of the equipment, and the doors that are in there that aren't necessarily break-in proof to get into locker rooms and those kinds of things, so we'd have to put a little bit of funding into making sure that all those could be locked down properly and safely, so that we didn't have to worry about people in the middle of the night getting into those things.
Have you talked to Brian at all? Reed? I know it's been years ago since we've had something in there as a contingency, but I remember, I don't know if it was Catfish Days or if it was...
Some wrestling or some good crap.
Yeah, we had something in there that was a contingency in case it rained, and it seemed to work pretty well, and that's prior to the bathroom, you know, the remodel and the bathrooms and all of those pieces. I think that would be a key piece for, is to make sure that if they're gonna supply the people to do the work, that they know how to change the, you know, the towels and all the linens and all of that kind of stuff. And I don't know if we're still pulling linen there, if we're just doing paper towel, right?
Right.
No?
Paper towel.
Back in the day, we were using the linen back in the day, so...
The only thing, the only previous conversations I've had with Brian, he has talked about when we've had in the past, the ultimate wrestling or the UFC types of fights, the messes that were left after, and he and his crew would come in on Monday morning to the whole place, being your shoes stick to the floor, and there's beer cans and beer cups all over the place, and that just takes days to clean. So that's why I brought up the cleaning and the security side of it to Justin right away. Those would be a couple of things that would be important to have help on.
That would be just maybe taking care of like a depositor, working something out.
Put it right in the contract.
In years past, they used to have between the event and the VFW area, which is probably easier to control, easier to clean up, but you just always have between the event with alcohol and ban, but that's an option, but it probably would be better to secure it.
It would be, the VFW is a little easier to close up.
Parking's an issue there, though. So I probably need to talk to Brian then. You guys need to get together with these two and walk through some things.
Well, we would just put in an agreement that it would be a contingency, and we'd just put all the details in that agreement, just like anything else, and follow through. And you know there's been alcohol allowed in that building on previous occasions with proper security.
Anything else on the first item, then?
I don't think so. Unless you guys have something else.
Okay. Discussion, number two, discussion on possible paving of the city parking lot.
I know we brought this up before we even started, I think we've had a couple of conversations about it, and we were just looking now, two, almost two years into being open, looking at it from the standpoint of, you know, with this event, if we do get rain even a couple of days before, it really kind of hinders the portion where the stage is gonna go and where people are gonna go. I mean, if it's still, even if it's the night before, we could be left with a mess and having to figure out what we're gonna do to make sure that gets all dried up.
And also just everyday business as well.
Right.
I mean, I think that's the biggest thing right now as far as...
This winter with snow removal.
Snow removal was pretty huge. There was a lot of times you couldn't even drive in that parking lot. Some of our employees were getting stuck all the time. I mean, granted, that was right in the middle of a snow storm, but just as far as like curb appeal, too. I mean...
Personally, what I've noticed is that I always come down River Road and right down Fourth there, and every other city lot is plowed, and ours is maybe a day later, maybe two days later. And that was pretty consistent this whole winter. Last winter, it wasn't as bad, but this winter it was, I ended up having to talk to a couple of the guys and just ask them, I grabbed them as they were plowing, I said, "Do you guys, are you guys told to plow this, or is this just kind of left over?" And they really didn't have answers for me, so that's why I figured this was their option.
Mark?
That lot's for sale. You're welcome to purchase it. And I know I'm for one, will not put $150,000 into a cement parking lot for you guys to use free of charge.
Well, we talked about that initially, and we'd been told it wasn't for sale. That was...
Well, it seems to me you were in there last time complaining that someone was gonna build an apartment complex on it, wasn't that correct?
That's because we were told it wasn't for sale.
And so it's for sale.
All right.
You're welcome to buy it and spend the $150,000 on that lot.
But really, though, every lot...
As far as snow removal is concerned, we do it when we can.
Right.
And because you're a business using it doesn't mean you should have any priority over it. We try to do whatever we can, but we're trying to get the streets open, which is the most biggest priority you have.
And I'm not debating that at all, but realistically, we're looking to add business, and if we're not gonna be accommodating to business, which a parking lot is a big part of it, then what's the city trying to do? You don't track business, not...
You opened a can of worms here, because the rest of the lots downtown...
Are city-owned.
Right. And I for one, want them to start paying for their snow removal on it.
And that's been brought up before, too, and we said that we were perfectly okay with that, but no inaction isn't helping anybody, and that's the only lot that we sustain our business.
You lease your building right now, correct?
Right.
Talk to your landlord, have him purchase it for you.
You can understand where it doesn't seem like we're being very favorable to tracking business when we talk about it that way. You know what I mean? You gotta spend money to attract.
You spend money to attract, but $150,000 for us to spend is taxpayer money.
What's the purpose?
We don't do Hugo's parking lot, we don't do snow removal on that.
But that isn't city-owned.
That's their own, and now you're asking us, you're coming in asking us to spend $150,000 so you can use it.
Because up until this point, we were told it was not for sale, so this is brand-new news to us. It was entertained before when they were talking about building that, and it sounded like it wasn't really wanted to be sold then either, though. So that's why we're here asking for this.
Well, you're welcome to purchase it.
Sure. Henry?
I disagree with him. I think that it's very important that it be paved. It solidifies the entire block, and the lot had been offered for sale before, it wasn't, nobody showed any interest, and it just isn't gonna be up north that gets the benefit. One thing about paving it, if you decide to sell it later, at least you can take the value of that and push it onto the sale, but it's important that we don't have muddy streets also. We're getting a lot of garbage out in the streets and we're spending money. East Grand Forks looks nice all over town, and one thing we want to do is keep up with paving. We've got the situation in North End that there's some spots that should be taken care of, too, so, but I support it. I respect his thoughts, but I happen to disagree with him. You know, you gotta do one thing, you gotta take and vision the whole area, and one thing that we've found out, especially lately downtown, is that parking is one of its biggest assets. You can take and go around East Grand Forks and you'll see a lot of North Dakota licenses, Manitoba, Wisconsin, West Coast, and all over. They're not coming over for sunshine, even though we get sunshine before North Dakota does, but I strongly support it. And before we say no, I think, as I said, it helps that whole block down there, it solidifies it.
I have a question. Is the parking lot north of like the movie theater, behind the fire department and everything, is that city-owned as well?
It's for sale?
Yep.
Anybody that wants to buy them.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Well, first of all, I should say, they rehearsed this before they came in.
Sure.
They were doing the good council member, bad council member thing on you there, so this was all kind of staged. The one thing that to me is relevant to the question of paving that is, I'd like to see a fairly, no pun intended, it's kind of a concrete development plan for how we intend to use that open area. If we have any thought that it could ever have a structure placed on it, it would be foolish to pave it now, especially if that was gonna happen in the next, say, five to seven years. I think there is a pretty strong interest in holding that open for parking. The minute you would close that off and put a building on it, it will add, I think, potentially adversely affect businesses in that area. So if we were gonna build on that space, you know, we'd have to locate where in there would you reserve parking, where in there would you consider it open? And if we can decide on a footprint that any future building would be, let's say, over here, I'd be a lot more receptive to paving that. I mean, it would help everybody in the area, it would sure help the VFW, it would help you guys, it would finish off that area nicely. It is kind of an eyesore on a prominent corner when it gets wet and spongy and sloppy and stuff. And from a functional standpoint, you could lay it out a little better, probably fit more cars in there if you had it striped, you know, paved and striped. So I can see there's a good upside to doing it.
And, you know, realistically, and with all due respect, I mean, it was one of the major questions we had before we even committed the lease. It's still one of the major questions we get asked, is what do you guys do about parking? And if that were, let's say it wasn't us and it was to be sold and developed, you would see us pack up and move within a year or two years, there'd just be no way around it. Our business would fail. And we've said that from the beginning, that was our biggest reason why we were so opposed to that apartment building. And it's just kind of the nature of our business, of needing that, especially in this climate that we're in. If you come down on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, that lot, the whole VFW lot, is packed, and I would venture to say everybody in here is driven by it on one of those nights. You know, it fills up, and it's a dire need for us, so, I mean, that's all we'd say. If there was a way we could maneuver to buy it and you guys wanted to sell it, great, we could figure something out. But if not, I mean, if anything else went there, we could promise you right now, within a year or two, we'd be out, we'd be across the river.
Just for the point of history, if you wanna know what was under there through the years, I can tell it to you, but I'm not gonna take any more time. But it's been cleared for pollution and everything else, but I can tell you the history of it going back quite a ways, about 80-some years, so...
Carla, did you have something?
Yeah, actually, we had an artist come in, and their plan is to have a mural done on the VFW wall, so they also had concerns about something being built on there. And so just so everybody's aware of that, that there is a local artist, that, I mean, he's from a local area, but he lives out somewhere else, or he has a plan to paint a mural on that wall. That is very steeped risk.
Chad?
Just, if we don't have an appetite to pave that thing, I think we need to work with Jason and his staff, you know, for these guys to get that snow out of there in the winter, and I know that's not, it's not a, if it's not a priority, but, I mean, I've driven by the movie theater parking lot at 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, and the snow's being removed, or I just don't see why that can't be taken out of there at a decent time and moved out of there. I think Jason's crew could easily work that. I don't know if it's a logistic issue with them or what, but I know that they blow the snow over and push the snow over and blow it over the dike into the campground in that area, but I think we could work something out to help you guys at a period of, at times, too, so. But I guarantee we're not gonna move it out of there on a snowstorm on a Sunday night, but we'll try to work our best to, you know, to get it opened up. That's all.
And what else, anything on that?
I suppose one other little tidbit is, you know, we are about fairness, and just what you're saying on the timing of snow removal and hard surface parking, if that's kind of the standard through our downtown, is relatively close hard surface parking, we'd have to take a look at that.
Just to put my two cents in, I won't vote for any paving on that lot. I think it's a terrible waste of a great asset we have, and that asset is location. Best thing we can do for our business community, not individual businesses, but the entire business community, is create a market, and that market is people. And I think paving and for paint for, on a mural, I think are, they might be nice things in the short term, but they do not match what a long-term strategy, or even a medium-term strategy for the downtown is for East Grand Forks. We have, we have a ton of parking downtown, and we can, there's ways to get around it. There's a parking lot just on the other side of your building, maybe work with that proprietor. You know, there's, we've got another lot that's for sale half a block down. I understand that people wanna park right across the street, park right on the street in front of any business, but that's not, that's not reality. That's, it's a, it's a luxury we've provided people at a cost to the entire community that is paid for by the entire community. So I, just because it's been the case, I mean, if you go to Shields parking lot, you have to walk, I don't know, what is it, quarter mile if you're, and that's through a place where it's out in the middle of nowhere where the wind's blowing. You know, I mean, people will walk places. I think we don't give people enough, enough of their own, we don't give them enough respect. We don't, we don't, we treat them, we coddle them and think that the only way they're gonna do something is if we walk them to the place and they're gonna do it. So I will not vote for paving that lot. I think it's a undue cost to the business community downtown.
Ask him, Mark, what you would prefer to see happening with that lot?
I'd put a building up, the one that was previously proposed.
Okay, so then with us being established now in here almost two years, you would rather see us pack up and move by allowing another building?
I disagree with your...
Our space was three weeks from being turned into residential, because they couldn't fill it.
I'm just saying, there's, I don't think that adding 200 people or 150 more people downtown is a bad thing for any business.
Where would those people park in that new building?
There was underground parking in those proposals, so, like I said, I understand, but parking is a lagging priority to me. And I think if you look at how downtowns are built, they aren't built around parking, they're built around creating vibrant communities, not parking. Parking is a secondary factor, so that's, that's my philosophy, and I don't think that having a parking lot in front of, especially in downtown, it makes a difference if you're out in the middle of a, you know, suburban area where you got tons of room, but downtowns are by nature and by design tightly packed, you know, with buildings, not parking.
That's more historical, though, not our downtown, where our downtown has been.
Well, what was there? It was a building. So, I mean, it's, that's, the point is, is we got rid of the buildings because of the flood, and now we've, we've just, because they haven't been filled, now they're parking lots, you know, so, like I said, I don't think, I don't think parking is the city's priority down there. Creating a vibrant business environment, which is people. People are your customers. They're our customers. They're, you know, providing them with what they're looking for. What we hear is people are looking for more and more downtown type living apartments, things where they don't have to, you know, can get in affordably. That's, that's what we hear when, or I hear at least, when I'm listening to people about housing and those type of things. People don't, can't afford a $225,000 starter home, so that's what they're looking for, so.
Before the flood, we had our clinic on the corner of Fourth and Demers, and we had no parking lot adjacent to it, and we heard almost every day, the problem with you guys is parking, right? They had street parking on both streets, on Demers and on Fourth and, excuse me, Third, Third and Demers, and every, you know, every week we heard several of our patients say, "You guys have a parking problem here." So I know it's a downtown, and I had the same thought, you know, if you walk a block through a parking lot at a shopping mall, it's still a block, but it doesn't feel the same when you walk a block in a downtown. Feels like you parked at the door and walked a block to the mall, to the big box mall. It feels like you walked forever in a downtown. I don't know what the difference is, but that's what I've observed. They do want to be close to the door at a downtown shop.
The last thing I would say, well, you know, to be honest, and with all due respect, I understand where you're coming from, it was kind of the same argument that Craig Tweetin made last year, to me personally, is that, you know, look at any business on Third Street and Grand Forks and around the downtown Grand Forks area, and people with limited parking find their way to get to those businesses. And what I told them is, I 100% agree with you, but unfortunately, we are not Grand Forks, and we don't get that type of traffic across the side to our downtown if you look at what they get to their downtown, and that's just a given. We don't have as many restaurants, we don't have as many, you know, niche businesses and whatnot. We have Restaurant Row, which has an abundant amount of parking lot, and that's just fine, but I still run into people every day that have no idea where up North Pizza Pub is. There's so many people that do not pass Restaurant Row. And to Steve's point, I've heard that many times, too, is that, you know, we tried to stop there, but there was nowhere to park. And that tells me that's a good problem for us to have, but that's also utilizing that giant unpaved lot that's already there, along with the VFW's lot, and people are still staying, we didn't have anywhere to park. And I'm looking at those nights going, oh, we still have three or four tables left, so it is what it is. And, like I said, I understand where you're coming from, but in the middle of January, in the middle of February, when it's negative, whatever it is, people do care about where they park, and they're not going to walk a block just to come meet at our restaurant if they don't have to. There's 150 other restaurants in town that they can go, so it already puts us a little bit, at a bit of a deficit when we're trying to attract some of those customers, so.
Shirley?
I have two sides of this. I work downtown, of course, at the library, I also live within blocks of downtown, and so I am a walker, and I can walk to pretty much any business that we have downtown. I totally enjoy that. But at the same time, we have a public parking lot at the library. There are days when it's full, and we do share it with other businesses on both sides of us. And if we're busy, we let them know that we're going to use the entire parking lot, or if there's an event, say at Edgewood next to us, they let us know that if it's possible they'd like to use one side of the parking lot. It helps us be good neighbors, it gives us space. And quite honestly, I have kids who live all over the country in large cities, and parking is crucial. People who go to the Grand Forks Library, and I'm not knocking their library, but they know their parking is atrocious, people will drive all the way across the cities to come over here, 'cause it's easier to get into, to park and walk in the front door.
Just last point of all I'm gonna make, Mark, I'm sorry, I'm picking on you on this, but when you say that you're looking to attract business and whatnot, you know, that's kind of what we had envisioned the whole, when we decided to come back and put this here, and that's why we started Rockin' Up North, and that's why, so I mean, it's utilizing, so we're not talking about just the parking lot, but now trying to grow this event, and we have space to add, I mean, how many people do you venture to say we could fit in there if this thing really blew up?
Thousands.
Thousands.
There's a lot of space.
So I mean, if we're looking to add, you know, bigger names and make this a much bigger event, that's attracting people to our community, and we're making them go further than Restaurant Row, but that will not be possible if the building goes there at all, 'cause I mean, you saw where the stage was last year, I imagine, we utilized the whole thing, so. It is kind of us asking for, let's say it, a little bit of a favor, but, you know, we're saying that we're looking to build and bring more foot traffic to this side, too, so it's kind of where our stance is with it.
Henry?
I'd like to make one more comment. A lot of communities would love to have the parking situation we've got. It looks like a swinging town. You come in from the outside and Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, why, you think you're, there's gotta be something going on here? Well, there is something going on, and image is important. Now, we're getting the size, East Grand Forks and Grand Forks, but East Grand Forks, you gotta look ahead, we're projecting 12,000 in the future, and that might end up being conservative, but... conservative. But, uh, you gotta look at the whole picture. And, uh, I, I think that you're premature to say no to it. And if we continue to do what we're doing, Charlotte can tell you, I, I'm downtown, I'm all, all over. Uh, they use a parking lot in the library. They use the streets and all over. And, uh, if you take and go over by the swimming pool in the playground, uh, you can count the licenses. Uh, I count the licenses on the side streets, uh, out of 20 cars, 21 cars. 17 or 18 are from North Dakota or Alaska or someplace else. That's a positive, it's not a negative. Uh, we all know of cities that would just love to have some traffic. You know, some, some, some communities are sleeping communities, but, uh, uh, we're, we're, we think a little different. We're activated. And if the people are activated, you're gonna have growth and healthy growth. So it doesn't hurt to discuss it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you guys want to add? I know, I think we'll probably still have more discussions goes on with this, and have more discussions on the parking lot. Good discussion.
By the way, you have a special at nine o'clock at night on, on pizzas too.
Good points on both sides, and I guess we'll just have to keep working at it.
Is asphalt out of the question on that? I know I kind of mentioned that to Megan, because I know asphalt will be considerably less charged than concrete, but granted.
Good question. Engineer's not here, and Jason's not here, so we can tell you.
I believe they were supposed to be, I think they might be on that, they had a little bit of an issue on a street.
They're might be doing it right now.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yep, I appreciate it.
Hope you did work, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, move on to number three, request to paint tunnel to Sherlock Park. Ms. Nelson.
I believe Ms. Gloria Bancroft is here. If you want to have a seat, maybe there next to Mark. Um, Gloria had contacted us last fall, and, um, the tunnel that goes under Highway Two, um, that goes into Sherlock Park area, her and a group had cleaned that out, and they had made the request to paint. Um, by the time we had tried to kind of reconnect, the weather changed and it got too cold. Um, so now that the weather is finally getting nice again, um, the request has come back. So Gloria, I'll, I'll let you kind of talk to the, go ahead and let them know kind of what you want to do. And I did include the pictures that you had sent me in the packet, um, what she called clean graffiti, so I'll let you take it.
And I don't have to ask for any money. Um, I'm the youth director at Mendenhall Presbyterian Church, and we meet every Wednesday after school. We've got an average of about 10 kids who come. Most of those kids come from the neighborhood around there. They ride their bike or walk over. Um, and they aren't necessarily members of Mendenhall, but this is what they enjoy doing on Wednesdays after school. And we try to do besides, uh, just entertainment, we try to have them do some service work. Last fall, I had them bring a broom, and they swept the leaves out of that tunnel that goes across from Mendenhall and cleaned it out. And now, I was just down there checking, and there's a lot more leaves that have blown in. So tomorrow, they're going to bring brooms again, and we'll get it cleaned out again. Uh, when I was looking last week, uh, there, there's formerly some not-so-clean graffiti, and I don't know if it's the city, or if it's the park district, but someone has painted dark gray over the painting that was bad, um, just to kind of block it off. But now there's some new graffiti, um, and I, I know there's a swastika down there, and someone wrote the word "believe," which is nice, it's a positive thing. And, um, there's a few things that look like either initials, someone's initials, or maybe a gang sign. So, um, I want to teach these kids that, um, they, they can use their artistic skills and have fun doing something positive. It's kind of their park, they're so close by there, and they go under the tunnel a lot. Um, and what I would do, it would be to just kind of outline in black with little pieces inside. Everything that would be outlined in black would be colored in by the children in a color. If you look at the pictures, you can kind of get an idea. So, um, I think the lesson for the children would be that, um, if you're gonna paint a wall, make it a positive word, um, that's inspiring. Um, putting the negative signs and words on is not cool. Um, and it kind of gives them ownership of their park. So I'm just looking for an okay. I mean, we could just go down and paint it like the graffiti people do, but, but I would, uh, I, I just wanted to get permission to do it.
Russell?
I think it's a great idea, Gloria. Um, I just, when you're talking to those kids, you gotta make sure that you know that as soon as you do that, it's going to attract those ba, those kids back, or whoever's down there doing that. But if you're gung ho and you've got that group, I, I don't see why we should say no to anybody that wants to try to make that place a better place. Appreciate it.
Talk like you deal with kids.
Anybody else have any questions on it?
Happy painting, Gloria.
Um, by all means, I think it's a great project. Just wondering, you know, I think during the flood control project, there was some, I don't even know what it was, when we did the walls and stuff, there was some anti-graffiti stuff that was put on the walls. Just wondering if, once they put the paint on, if there's, if Jason could look into something like, yeah, like a clear coat, so it's more like you scrub it off instead of having to come back and repaint it or whatever. So maybe if Jason wants to take a look at that after, after we do it, and we could, or incorporate it and give them the stuff, and maybe they'll do it afterwards.
Who's Jason?
Store it all, as our public works.
I can, I can, I'll space with Gloria after you guys are done. Actually, on the next agenda. Gloria, if I could get your contact information. I'm Reed with the Parks Recreation Department. I think it'd be nice for you and I to connect so that we can touch base.
Maybe recommend a paint?
If there is, like Chad, that was the only comment I was gonna have, is kind of, unfortunately, a little bit have to be prepared for the follow-up graffiti that might come after it, if we can just kind of stay connected on refreshing that always, or how to get in touch with you if, if we notice something, so it can get updated. But to Mark's point, I think there is a clear coat anti-graffiti. We could get that too throughout our department.
Would you use an enamel to start with?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Wonderful. Anybody else have anything on that?
Do you want my, I'll come?
Yeah.
Want me to wait for you, Reed, or?
Thanks, Gloria. Who's got nine tenths of the rest of the agenda?
All right, request to retrofit O'Leary tennis courts into pickleball courts. Reed?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Myron Johnson is here with me. He is a local pickleball player. He, we, someone we've leaned on in our department for a few years is kind of the pickleball expert. So should you have any questions on this, uh, we can certainly call him up to answer them. Um, the, the request has, has come in over the last month or so from, from Myron, uh, Steve Sholen, and Troy Bowman are three residents in town that are members and leaders in the Grand City's pickleball club, uh, that they meet all winter long, two nights a week, maybe three nights a week at the Hislop, uh, and play pickleball indoor, and their numbers are growing like crazy. They've been meeting for a few years at the O'Leary complex, playing on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Sundays. Um, and they've come with a request for us to transition a few more of our current tennis courts into permanent pickleball courts. Right now, the complex has two permanent pickleball courts and three tennis courts. Uh, and their request is to flip two more tennis courts into four more permanent pickleball courts. So the complex, we would leave, they actually requested initially for us to turn the whole complex into pickleball courts, because they think they have that many people playing that they could fill it up every, every night they play. Um, but in, in talking with Mark and I, we, we would like to leave one tennis court there, so that it is still an option for people. Um, but that'd be the request from them, and that I would recommend that we do that. Uh, the cost of doing it really is, from the city's perspective, they've asked for us to help with purchasing the nets, and then we would want to buy some more acrylic paint to, uh, be able to paint the, the rest of the pickleball court, so it was all the right colors with the right striping. Uh, and the Grand City's pickleball club, they would foot the bill for the standards for the four courts, and that's the pretty expensive part of it. They have a local guy that could build them. Uh, and he actually built the standards they used on the new pickleball courts in Crookston. So we know that they're a, a good standard that can work well. Um, as far as the tennis community goes, we talked a little bit with the school district. Uh, they have, of course, four courts at the high school and four more at the middle school. They have previously, historically, occasionally used the O'Leary courts for a, when they have a triangular, um, maybe once a year, twice a year at the most. In talking with their athletic department, their activities department, they felt like if we flipped these into pickleball courts, it wouldn't impact their scheduling at all. They would be able to easily work around that. Uh, and actually, Mr. Koberinsky mentioned to Mark that they were trying to get away from scheduling middle school, junior varsity and varsity events all in the same day, just because logistically, it's really difficult for them to be able to manage all those events in all those places. So I think, uh, it's a way to get the courts to be used more often than they are. Like, of course, I only have one summer of experience, but in the one summer, uh, I didn't ever see more than four people using those courts for tennis. And on the nights when we had pickleball, they were very active. Now, take that with a grain of salt, I live on the north end, and I, I don't drive that direction unless I have a purpose in the evening, but.
I think the, uh, the school one is dedicated. Byron Olson set aside money for it. I, I think that one might, you may not be able to change it, so.
Right. And this would just be the O'Leary park, just the city's?
Yeah, I'd support it if you're recommending.
Anybody else have anything? Mark?
Chad, you know, like are the school ones, are they open to the public? Like, so if anybody-
Let's just walk in. Yep.
Yep.
Anything else, sir? Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess you can move on to number eight right away, though. We'll come back to five. Uh, discussion on a special event request for the Iron Pigs Motorcycle Club. Reed?
Okay, thank you, again. And is that, yes. So Officer Mark Nichols, at least, I think he's officer, he's with the Grand Forks Police Department. If I got your rank wrong, I apologize.
Oh, you're good.
Um, he's, he is here representing the Iron Pigs Motorcycle Club. Uh, Mike Anderson, who's one of the leaders of this event, wasn't able to make it tonight. Uh, bringing everybody back, you remember about a year ago, we approved the naming of the trail on the north end, the North End Greenway Trail, after Kenneth Olson and his memorial. Uh, at that time, they were discussing the ride for last year, and they decided to move away from it because we were just running out of time. So this is an earlier request to be able to ride, uh, have their motorcycle ride go down the greenway trails, um, kind of at the conclusion of its ride. Starting, the new map they have would be entering the trail on the north pedestrian bridge from the Grand Forks side, and then riding the trail to the exit of the trail right at the, kind of the River Road, 17th Street Northwest area. And then that's the, the area that is named after Kenneth Olson. Uh, and then they'd get back on River Road at that point. Um, this request hasn't gone, I don't believe, it's been submitted in Grand Forks, but I don't believe the Grand Forks City Council has reviewed it or anything at this point. Um, from the greenways standpoint, the Greenway Technical Committee, we met last week on Tuesday and discussed it. The, that committee didn't make a recommendation or approval or disapproval of the ride, because ultimately, that's the authority of this council and of the Grand Forks Council. What we tried to do is lay out, if it's going to happen and if it's going to be approved, what can we try to push or expect of the club to make it a safe endeavor for all involved, knowing that it's a pedestrian trail for walkers, runners, and cyclists. Uh, and it's not, on a daily use, motor vehicles are not allowed on the trail without a special permit or for work purposes. Um, so there are a few things in your packet. The criteria essentially is really just trying to communicate it to the public in advanced timeframe, that at a given date and time, the ride will be coming through, uh, and that prior to the ride, for the duration that motorcycles will be on the ride, they have actual volunteers at all the entrances in that section of the trail to tell users that there'll be motorcycles coming through in the next 30 minutes, or whatever the timeframe may be. So, um, I guess with that, I'll just kind of leave it to you guys if you have any questions, uh, for myself or for Mr. Nichols.
Want to add anything, sir?
Uh, no, that's just about it. Uh, I looked at the criteria and all that's very simple. We can make up signs, put them out, uh, the three days prior, and we have plenty of volunteers to sit at all the crossings to advise the public.
Do you have any questions at all?
I'm just curious, and this is just me. Um, tell me, as you go through there, how's that going to go? Is this kind of a solemn ride through there? What, what's the tone of all of this? I'm just really curious.
Well, we, we do the ride, obviously, for, it's named after Kenny Olson, and, uh, it benefits the Kenneth M. Olson Scholarship, stuff like that. And it's more, more a celebratory ride. At the end, we'll do a moment of silence for Kenny and all fallen officers, stuff like that. But generally, it's a fun time, just trying to remember Kenny and other fallen officers.
It's a great, a great, um, way to do that. I think it's a good thing.
Anybody else have any questions on that? I see none. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Okay, go back to number five, discussion on 2017 year-end transfer to special assessments. Ms. Anderson?
Um, since we're in the middle of our audit for 2017, and then we'll be doing a financial statements, um, in 2017, we budgeted $105,217 from the Fund 280, which is the housing fund, to transfer to the general fund to cover the required tax levy for the 2004 improvement bonds. And so my question is, is that the fund as of 12/31/17 already has a negative $81,000. And so my question to you is, we budgeted that, do you want us to do the transfer or not? If we do the transfer, we'll be about $186,000 in the hole. Um, just some background in the 280 fund. The 280 fund actually has been giving out the $5,000 incentives to new homes. The decision was made and a resolution was done in November to phase that out, so that will end as of 12/31/2018. There will be a few houses in 2018 that'll get that $5,000. Um, also that you have to live in the home for 10 years, so we do actually collect money back every year. We collected $25,000 last year back for that $5,000 incentive. And so I, I guess, we just have a, need a direction on, do you want us to do the transfer or not do the transfer? And just a little, um, side note is that I did run where we kind of are for 2017 in our general fund, from what we budgeted to what is actual. And we had budgeted, uh, revenue over expenses for about $492,000. And, um, as of today, we're actually at 728. So that 105 would actually come off that, which would still keep us within our budget. And we would eventually, you know, get rid of that deficit between selling of lots. And I know, uh, Paul had mentioned that there was a developer that's looking at like buying 10 lots. So I, we just need a decision to move forward in our audit.
Anybody have any recommendations?
Mark?
That 2004, or, yeah, 2004 improvement bond, what's-
That is like the water's edge, so that's the streets and all that area.
What's the maturity, or what, what's left on it, I guess, or?
I believe there's at least another 10, well, it's a 20, I believe it's a 20-year loan. So there, well, it's actually longer than that, I think. Because we, we funded, yeah. And, and what, what we did for the next year in our 2018 budget, the tax levy on that is 109, and we did not budget to transfer any money. The money will just come out of the general fund. And the problem with the tax levy is that we have to have a tax levy on there if we have, don't collect enough on the specials, or we don't have enough in the fund that is connected to the bond. And the reason there's not enough in the fund, and we're not collecting enough, is because of those lots that the city owns in Water's Edge. That's why there's a tax levy. So that's why we actually had done the transfer from the 280 fund, because that's where the sales of those homes go. However, when we do the sale of a lot, the amount for the specials go directly to the special fund, and the amount of the lot goes to the 280 fund. And most of those lots are at about $5,500 is what the value of the lot is. So we do need to sell a lot of lots every year to compensate- every year to compensate for that fund. Sorry if it's very complicated.
How many did we sell last year? Do you know?
I believe.
On the north end, I think.
And where is it?
I think it was, yeah, maybe five or six. And see, the other thing we're doing in that 280 fund is that we actually are encouraging builders to build on them. We're allowing them to borrow up to $100,000 for an incentive to build. We've sold two of those homes. There's two more in the process again now, so. So that's the other thing with our cash flow. And if you look, I put in there what our balance was of us last Friday. It's at negative 53. So we are swinging back, but, and maybe Mike can, could answer some of that a little better. Thank you.
Paul's not here, so have you discussed this with Paul and how, what he, what he would recommend we do? Does he have a recommendation for?
He doesn't have a recommendation either. And I asked him, I mean, he did say that, you know, there was gonna, hopefully, he's looking at selling 10 lots, you know, this year.
Right.
But that's all a guess.
I guess, is he, what are you recommending?
I, I guess, it doesn't matter. It's just that we have to decide we're going to do the budget or not. I mean, it won't, it won't affect our general fund if we do it. It will affect the 280 fund.
It, it must matter if you're asking us to make a decision. So I guess, I'm asking you what.
Well, I actually did not do the transfer, just because that would put 280 fund into a bigger hole.
Okay.
The auditors have said that you budgeted, I can't make the decision. The council has to decide. No, we want to transfer it, or no, we don't. Since the fund is in the hole already, in our books, we'll have to put in there like we're actually loaning them the money from the general fund to cover the deficit. So it would just cover more of the deficit if we did the transfer. So I just need a decision, yes or no?
There.
So if you followed along with the original plan, it would be, go ahead and add it to the balance, put it deeper into the negative, but you didn't feel too good doing that. And so you were wondering if perhaps it could come out of the general fund, which would essentially just take the, whatever little bit of surplus we create this year and bring it down a little bit? Or was this back to 17?
This is 2017.
17 surplus. Yep. So the 17 surplus shown would just go down by that 100 and change, and you didn't have to drive this fund into the negative quite so far?
Right. So what, what I have, I have not done the transfer.
Right.
So by doing the, not doing the transfer, the budget, you know, the 280 fund is at a negative 81.
Yep.
And the general fund is still at about a $700,000 revenue over expenses. So what would have hap, we've already paid that tax levy out of the general fund. It's just going to get reimbursed. So what happened is that revenue did not come back into the general fund from the transfer. So I guess my question is, are you okay with that? And we'll leave it at that? Or do you want to do the transfer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, if I'm grasping it correctly, and there's a lot of, so my preference would be to loan the 280 fund the money from the general fund because in my, and I don't know if I'm getting it right, but to me, that ensures that we get paid back in the general fund once those funds start coming, or if they come back in. If we just pay for it out of the general fund, then there's no, then any funds that come into 280 just stay in 280, correct? Unless we go in and actually say, we want to move these. If two years down the road, you get, you sell 10 houses or whatever, you have to say, oh, yeah, by the way, I remember we loaned or gave you this money or paid for this. So I guess I would like to have the paper trail that says that there is a deficit owed back to, back to the general fund.
The other reason I like this course of action is it's kind of also a truth in accounting.
Yep.
Because over here, you show a bigger surplus. If you drove that to the negative, you'd show a bigger surplus for 17, but then you'd just be carrying a bigger deficit over here. So the surplus that you showed is, is false, right? If you, if you raised it by the 100,000. So I, I kind of like going ahead and not driving that so far the negative and then showing that it was a loan.
But you said a different, you said the other way. You want them to move them, have the transfer done from the 280 to the general fund so that you can see where it actually should be at? Is that?
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know. Either way, it's coming out of the general fund. To me, it's just whether or how you're showing it. And to me, I think you need to show it as a loan, because that loan guarantees that you're going to get paid back.
So do the transfer?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay. Because that's not what I heard you say, Steve. So I want to make sure.
We'd be transferring from the 280 fund to the general fund, so the, the 280 fund would show an even larger negative.
And the general fund would show a larger positive.
Positive.
It's all accounting. It sounds like a shell game in a way.
Which shell you want to go where, sorry.
Mr. Bedder?
Thank you. I'm in favor of doing the transfer also, not only for the reasons that Mr. Demers stated, but also when we look at our budget and where we want to set our tax levy, we're always looking at the general fund balance. So if we don't do the transfer, our fund balance is going to be lower, and we're going to say, hey, we need to raise our, our tax levy to get our fund balance back up. So not to do that through the budget process, we need to do the transfer to keep our general fund balance up.
What's the long-range plan to repay 280?
Lot sales or, yeah. And just to remember, to keep you updated, is that in 2018, we did not budget to transfer the $109,000 from the 280 fund to the general fund, because we could see what direction it's going. But we did stop the $5,000 incentive.
And we stopped digging.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think everybody's okay with transferring it, right?
Does that make sense? I mean?
Yes. No, no, I, I, we just want to be clarified, so, thank you.
I do too.
Yep. So we will make the transfer. There will actually be a larger fund balance in the general fund and a smaller balance in there. We won't move the money. It'll stay as a negative. But just on the financial statements, it'll, there'll be a section on there saying there basically is a loan from the general fund to cover this fund. Thank you.
A placeholder. Pretty much. Let's move on to number six, request for direction on 2019 budget.
Yes. One of the things that we talked about during our, our work sessions and our budgeting process and, and our strategic planning throughout these last couple of years is to start the budgeting process as early as possible. The auditors have come through and have done their, all their in-place work. We don't have the audit back yet, but they've gotten all of their calculations done and have gone through this. So, and we would wanted to, the direction we had gotten was to start early, back, you know, here in April and May. So we just wanted to get this in front of you, get you to start thinking about it, seeing if there's things that you would like to see for 2019, if you're looking at general parameters, if you want to set some priorities, that type of thing. If, if we're going to be looking at, let's say, keeping, keeping the fund balance, you know, in that as close to 50% as possible, are we, are we going to look to try to do some capital improvements? This now would be the time to start talking about whether we are going to start adjusting our assessment policy, because if we're going to start paying part of those for the, from the city, we're going to need a funding source for that. Most likely, it's going to have to come from the general fund. So I just want to get the discussion started on that. See what.
Parking lots.
Paving parking lots. There you go.
All transportation infrastructure, all of it.
Mr. Bedder?
Thank you. My preference would be to look at the fees that are attached to the water and light bill and get as many of those fees as we can back into the general fund where they're supposed to be, and not as additional fees tacked on to, to, to the citizens. If we can get those miscellaneous fees off the water and light bill, then we can hold the water and light feet to the fire and say, what are you doing to lower your bill to our citizens? Right now, there's so much on that bill that it's hard to really determine what's water and light and what's the city. So if we can get any of those fees back into the general fund, that would be my goal.
When are we going through the audit? When will that be back?
They think it presented first part of June, was that what they said?
No, more than the middle of June. They're still doing, sending us information, asking for information. They just aren't on site. So, I mean, I get emails from them every day. But they're, probably the soonest would be the middle of June. But that doesn't mean we can't just move forward and budget in what we want either, so.
And I just asked a question. So, if we do the special assessment change, how, can you bring scenarios to us? Like, you work with the engineering and.
I mean, as far as what might be needed if we're going to do, let's say, a million-dollar project, and we're going to fund it 30%, 50%, 70%, something along those lines, what, what we would need to do that? Yeah, we can do that.
Also, a comparison of nearby cities, nearby Minnesota cities that all operate under this special benefits test, if we could get that, you know, copies of their street replacement policy.
Yeah, we, we have several of those already.
Yeah, let's maybe put for the discussion for the day of at a work session, let's get those kind of compiled. So to the, to the budget for 2019, when I'm going to go on a family vacation, I don't only think about places in the world I'd like to see. I do take a look in my wallet on the front end, and that kind of guides where I get to go. And so from a point of taxation for our dear residents, I think they'd like to see the, the increases continue to slow to hopefully about the rate of inflation. And so if we look on the revenue side, to do our very best to get that now down to about an inflationary increase for the average homeowner, I think is kind of important.
Thank you. I think we've all gotten our valuation increases. And if everyone's increases by the same, that's not such a big deal. But part of that piece then is to visit with the assessor's office to see what happened in town. Was it select few properties that went up? Did everyone's go up about the same amount? But to get that piece so that we can manage that all.
Of course, we gross, we levy gross dollars. And so, yeah, how it plays out to each property owner, you'd still be looking at it. It would distribute out, yeah, unless they had a disproportionate, you know, if you're thinking lower price, middle and high price. If the lower price valuations did not change, and then the middle and high did. So, yeah, it could be distributed out to the various properties differently. Yeah, that's probably worth a look.
Yep.
Do you have some input on that from Mr. Murphy? Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, when you talk about starting early, I guess my thought is, is that we should be starting on the 2020 and 2022, 2025 budgets right now. So that's how early I'm thinking. And what I mean by that is that I think we should start the process in this budget process of forecasting for those out years. We can pick, you know, a certain number of metrics that we want to use, whether it's tax rate, you know, debt service, or, you know, amount of debt that we have as part of our budget, you know, what our capital improvement, you know, trend is, so that we can look at over the course of 10 years, are we going to, are we going to be at that low versus, versus inflation kind of target? Or are we going to be up and down? Or what are we going to need to do? What I think, I mean, my goal would be is to make that, that line as, as flat and stable as possible. And the only way you can do that is by projecting out 10 years. Now, there's cer, there's obviously uncertainty in those out years. There's uncertainty in next year. But, but we need to have something, you know, the headlights on, so that we can see out there to make sure that we're, we're taking care of that. That way, we can manage our debt. You know, I know when we talked with, when we were doing the interconnect stuff, one of the interesting things that I saw is, you know, how, how Grand Forks, on their water side, was really working with, with their debt cycle and seeing how things come off and on, and when they can add capital improvement projects, that it, it kind of makes it a flatter, a flatter curve rather than, oh, we, now we took off, you know, this bonding bill or bonding fell off, and now we have a big dip, you know, now people expect that money. And then two years later, we got, we have another project coming up. So that would be my suggestion, is just looking at, and I'm completely open to the metrics we want to use or what we want to do, but having something that's easily decipherable and easily, easily communicable to people, that's, you know, nothing easier than a graph, you know, out 10 years that shows, this is where we project we're going to do. This is why we're making the decisions we're making today. So that's it.
We can certainly do that. The one caveat I'd put in there is that it's, that it's, as long as we understand that it's highly speculative. And, because we do it for the, right now, we do it with, with the items that we, we're fairly certain on, which we focus on the capital, the capital improvement projects, particularly equipment. We know the useful life of them, and we have them, and they're going to be rotating out approximately what we're going to cost for the replacement on those. And we can, we, we certainly can do this, but, but there's a lot of items that we've talked about, but we have not really put into a specific plan or a funding plan. And I, and I'm concerned that if we really do, there, there will be some sticker shock. But I think we have to look at it in the, sooner rather than later, particularly when we start talking about things like, you know, that everybody's aware of, the Civic Center parking lot, the Civic Center itself, the, the compressor plants, the ice making machines in, in really all of our arenas. Eventually, we're going to have to replace the, the, we're talking about the parking lots, we're going to have to eventually rework the one in the, where the theater is in the downtown district. If we're going to do something with our assessment policy, that's, that'll be a hefty price.
And I guess my point, sticker shock when it's five years old is manageable. Sticker shock when it's on top of you is a disaster. And I think what, what we can work with, you know, is, like I said, we don't, we don't have to put every want, you know, bell whistle and make it look like we've got, we're going to, you know, pave the streets in gold. But, I mean, we, we should start looking out in the, in the out years and show that what we want to do is make sure that our tax rates match what we're trying to do capital fund-wise and all that. Because I guess, in part, I look at a budget, not as an accountant, you know, it's not just about dollars and cents in and out. To me, it's about a statement. It's about communication. It's about values. And unless we can do that for our residents who are our customers, they, they're not going to be able to see what we're trying to do. And I, I mean, and even for us, how, otherwise, it's just a, a, a short-term, you know, acute budget. We're just doing, we're just solving the problems of this year. We're just doing this. If, unless we have, Henry talks about it all the time, you know, unless we have vision, unless we have that, we're, we're just, we're just paying the bills, you know. And I think the, the best way we can serve each other and, is to kind of look out. And obviously, like I said, nobody's going to hold it, or I'm not, and I guess I can't keep everybody's word, but I'm not going to hold administration or finances feet to the fire if in year three, we said, well, we're going to be here, you know. But we should have some way to get to where we're going to go.
Well, we can certainly put in the ones that we, that we know about and that we know are going to have to be replaced at some point. And we can give our best speculation on, on really when that will be necessary. Like I'm talking about the, 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 the ice making plants, the parking lots, those type of things. The unknowns, and I guess we can do our best for a timeline on that, would be, you know, what those costs might be, you know, but it'd be our best guess for things like South End Bridge, what we might have to kick in for that. You know, we have a kind of an idea where, I guess, pretty good idea what the, what the potential roundabout might cost and the timeline when that would be coming in. But some of the ones are more long-term, and we, I guess we'll just have to take our best guess, but.
Right. That's the capital side. But we can also track and project out fund balance. We can track and project out what we want our tax rate to be, you know, and those are other metrics.
But our biggest, really, our biggest driver for the cost, other than our capital improvement, is, is our staff costs. And we have, we have two more years of, because we have three-year contracts with, and we're getting the wage adjustment here, should be probably this next month here in May. So we'll have an idea for that, at least for the next couple of years. We can make speculations on what we think the cost of inflation is, you know, the cost of living is going to be in, in that. But that, that's, that's one of our, our big drivers for us, what our, what our levy changes is, is our, our staff costs.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for Mr. Murphy on that? I see none. Thank you, sir. Number seven, request to change representative on Red Lake River Corridor, Commissioner Mr. Demers.
That's me. I'll try to be brief. Basically. That's me. I'll try to be brief. Basically, I've talked to Reed about this. The Red River Corridor Commission has been meeting for a while. We've kind of gotten past the, what our goals and, you know, directives are. It's become a bit more of a technical committee, if I want to use that part. But it's about how do we allocate resources, how do we work with plans, all those type of things. And I just, I think that it would be better for the city and the board itself to be represented by a staff member, most likely be Mr. Huntman. I believe when the corridor was first set up, I think Mr. Aker was our representative. But I guess I don't mind doing it. It just, to me, a lot of the details and the questions that get asked there are about resource allocation and coordination type of things that, as a council member, I'm not, it's not my job, or not my, I don't have the authority to direct work, I don't have the authority to, you know, to understand what Reed has on a day-to-day basis, or what he can, you know, manage, I guess. So, I just think it's a, it would be more fitting for him. I don't want to add to his workload, obviously, but I just think, you know, I think Kirkston has, their city administrator is their representative. So, I just think it would be better suited from staff rather than a policy person such as myself. But, like I said, if there's any objection, I guess I can continue. But if we need to have something at the next meeting that would designate that, I guess, I would appreciate it.
No, I, Mark and I talked a little bit about it. I'm okay with it. Just a little update for everybody on where the corridor group is at. The, I believe the, come to your mic.
I attended a meeting last week when Mark was out of town for the Red Lake River Corridor Group. And the group as a whole is going to receive $200,000 in grant funding this in fiscal year 2019, state fiscal year 2019. But East Grand Forks doesn't have a project in that $200,000. The whole Red Lake River Corridor Plan itself and the application part of it, I believe what they, the group submitted last year for a grant application is like $1.6 million. And again, we didn't submit any parts of that. So, I guess to summarize, there is a local contribution to that. I'm not exactly sure what the local percentage is. It's something that you will probably start talking more about within our department, what we can do for river access and plans. Just a little bit of the historical record of the funding, the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails funding. What we have seen over the course of the last number of years is when that commission starts to fund a grant or a project, they like to see it through. So, this year was year one that the Red Lake River Corridor has received funding. And in similar fashion, at least what we're hoping and expecting is the Detroit Mountain and Detroit Lakes, the first year they received a very small portion of startup funding, the next year was a bigger chunk, the next year was a bigger chunk. And I think it's about, maybe they've gotten four or five years now worth of funding to really build that ski mountain and the trail system that goes around Detroit Lakes. So, if that's something that we want to be a part of, I think now is the time. We need, the iron is getting hot, so to speak, on that for river access and trails and development of the river area, the Little Fave Park area. So, as we're talking about budgeting and everything else, now's the time to roll up the sleeves and get to work on those things.
Anybody else have any question? Mike?
Just a quick comment. I was involved with that group when it got started. And I think, if I remember right, the inspiration for it was the Greenway and the trails and all of the amenities along our riverfront. And so, if anyone's not happy that East Grand Forks doesn't have a project funded, our project was the first project that was funded by the whole flood protection project. And we agreed back then, Tom Stennis was involved and that the other communities along the Red Lake River would be first in line. And then, I mean, I think one of the things that we talked about when we did get to East Grand Forks getting a project was a pedestrian bridge below the Red Lake River Dam. That's still a possibility, we could do it. But that would be probably way down the road. As a side note, Mr. Mickleseth was, I think he was working for the Nature Conservancy back then, was instrumental in starting that group. He was very active in the leadership when it first started. So, and I do support transferring the representation from a council member to Reed, our staff person, Reed would be obviously the right choice. So, I'll vote to approve that.
Anybody else have anything?
See none. Thank you, sir. I'll stay up your Reed. Move on to number nine, request to purchase Zamboni Ice We Serve, sir.
Thank you, sir. In our CIP financing fund for 2018, we have $115,000 allocated to order a new Zamboni. So, I have pricing in front of you for a, it's a gasoline-powered Zamboni, the model's a 546, at a price on the NJPA contract, total price delivered is $102,915.30. The way we would shuffle Zambonis, if this is approved, when this came in, the Zamboni that's currently in the Civic Center, we would move to the VFW Arena. The one at the VFW Arena, we would move to the Blue Line Arena. And the current 2001 Olympia that is in the Blue Line Arena, 2002, I apologize, we would take out of our regular rotation, but we would want to keep it, so that we have a backup Zamboni that is still in good enough shape to run indoors should something happen. We talk a lot about in our department, logistically, if we're hosting a big event or a tournament or a game, for example, at the Civic Center, and we had a Zamboni issue, what would we do? And we don't have a good answer for that, because it would take us a long time to get another Zamboni onto a trailer and across town. So, if we had one that we could keep kind of in storage and have on backup, so when we do host a section tournament or something, for example, we'd have that second Zamboni in the building should something happen, so we don't really interrupt the activity on a big event like that. And then the 1974, we would keep just for our outdoor use on our outdoor rinks. Just a couple of other comments on it. The lead time on it is 240 days or less. So, by the time it's approved next Tuesday, there's about 243 days left in the year. So, that puts us right around Christmas time or early 2019 before this would come in, and we'd start shuffling them at that time. The other part of it to consider that a lot of the communities have gone to are the electric Zambonis. The price on the electric Zamboni is about $150,000 for comparison. And those are still relatively in their infancy, as far as the maintenance and the general wear and tear on those batteries is concerned. So, Brian and I have talked at length about it, and we would like to wait one more cycle. Of course, the funding tells us that, but also just even, we'd like to wait the cycle of maybe using Kirkston as our guinea pig and seeing what their new electric Zambonis look like. And they can tell us five years from now what they think about them, and then we can go with it. As far as the air quality concerns with that, we don't have much for concerns. We have gasoline-powered in both the Civic and the VFW Arena right now, and haven't had issues with the air quality tests failing. And these machines are manufactured in California, so they have to have pretty low emissions to be able to come out of that state anyway. So, we feel pretty comfortable with that.
Their only reason Kirkston got theirs is because they got two for the price of one, under a program that Zamboni had, which they discontinued.
Correct, yeah. That was a grant offered through Minnesota with the Mighty Ducks Grant, it was called, and that's, the legislature didn't fund it for 2018 or 19.
I think it should be moved on.
Anybody else have any question?
Just a quick question about the gasoline-powered engine, why that instead of LP gas?
Really, for air quality. The propane, the propane machines put off more of that is the carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, the fumes that we have to have more concern over for air quality and indoor.
I would have guessed it would have been the opposite. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything? See none, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
Request to update seasonal summer pay scale. Reed?
Thank you again. There are a couple of different graphs in front of you showing what our current pay scale is, which the last time this was updated was in 2016, when minimum wage was about $9 an hour. And then the proposed one really is just kind of following the same scale that we had used previously. Ms. Knutson and Ms. Anderson started this with some input on the percentage of steps between each grade on the part-time scale. And then we talked about a 2% increase between each year if we have returning employees that did a good job and merit an increase. So, that would kind of mirror what our full-time employees are like at this point. So, this is just proposing an update to it to get ourselves a little bit back up to speed, or maybe up to par with what it would have been the last time it was updated prior to the minimum wage changes.
Can I just add one thing real quick? Or, I'm sorry, I was going to say, is this something that we'll have to look at probably every year from now on? Because now that the minimum wage is going to be tied to inflation and changing every year. So, if we're going to keep up with minimum wage, we'll probably have to reset this every year from now on.
The only other thing I was going to note on it is that this is only, I only included the summer seasonal positions. I'd like to take a little bit closer look at the winter seasonal positions, probably would consider something, you know, I would assume it'd be very similar to this. The only thing that I didn't want to, the reason I didn't want to include it is our referee rates are fairly outdated, to the point that we were losing officials from our own community to neighboring communities because they're paying better than we are. And we were struggling to fill hockey games specifically for that reason. So, I want to put a little bit more research and work into what they're paying and how that affects our budget before I bring a rate forward for approval on those.
Thing, before you leave, and this is for you also, Mr. Riappel. I got word just before the meeting from Reed that he has a group that is able to come in and help with some spring cleanup in people's yards for older people. And the group has some unused capacity. They're looking for a few more families or individuals that fit that age group. Would you be willing to just speak briefly to that, Reed?
Sure, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. The Sentence to Serve Program, Polk County Community Corrections, I'm sure everyone has heard of it or familiar with it. But they have a program going right now, really for this month. They focus a lot of their time on going to elderly homes to help rake leaves and clean the yard up. And they're trying to expand their reach in East Grand Forks. So, of course, that reach is all, they come with chaperones and bust by the Polk County Corrections Staff and put in the work. So, when I was chatting with somebody that works with them, their crew leader today, he mentioned that they're looking for more people to serve in East Grand Forks and anything we can do to refer people to them to do so. So, if anybody's interested in that, we can certainly share it at the senior center as well. But if anybody's interested in that, they can contact my office, Parks and Rec, and we can help put them in touch with Sentence to Serve.
We'll talk to Judy about it and see who we can, if we can put some posters up and talk to people there.
Thanks, Reed.
Thank you.
Anything else on the pay scale from anybody? Okay, move on to number 11, request for an administration intern.
Yes, thank you. We do this every now and then. We do have a budget for an intern. It's $5,100 here for 2018. Usually, we work with UND, see if there's anybody that's interested in. We go through and see if there's, the skill set that they do have will help benefit us. We did, so I have found an intern that I think might be of some benefit to us. Actually, particularly, it might have some to do with the community development, some of his history and some of the area that he has some expertise on. Nancy has some projects for him as well. So, this would be about nine weeks of 40-hour-a-week work. I'm just looking for a summer internship, and I think it would work out both for him and for us.
I think it's a great idea. Anybody have any questions on that?
Anything you could do with charter commission, you know, some of the background of contacting and pulling together, might be a good, there'll be a fair amount, I think, of, you know, just contacts and setting things up for that.
Well, we could, we're already, we're to the point where we're going to be probably having our first meeting here within the next week or two.
Good. You're cruising.
Everything's been approved then by the judges and stuff? For the, are you talking about, are you, what are you, whose meeting in the week or two? Charter commission group?
Yeah, the individuals that were contacted, yep.
Okay, want to make sure.
Good. So, it's moving ahead.
Number 12, 2018 election absentee location and charges for election equipment.
Okay. As you guys are aware, and I believe I included it in the RCA, the last election cycle rules changed. You no longer have to have a reason for voting absentee. It basically allows people to, that's Minnesota's way of voting early. Last time around, we were not an absentee location. If they wanted to vote absentee, they had to contact Kirkston or drive over to Kirkston, especially within a few days before, with the mail service to ensure that the ballot got there. That's one of the biggest complaints that came out of last year, the 2016 election. And we have been asked to be designated as an absentee location with a, I've talked about this a couple times, so forgive me if I say something wrong here, but I believe with the municipality being designated by the county, there's two ways of doing it. But if we agree to this, we'll just be serving our five wards that we have here. We'll have absentee ballots available 46 days before both the primary and the general election. Seven days, well, up to seven days before the actual election itself, people would be able to come up to the administration office. And the process would be very similar to our mail ballot that we did for our special election, where the ballot would be put in an envelope, and we would be working with Kirkston to get the ballots back and forth. They would hold the ballot board, make sure everything is okay. Seven days before the election, we would actually use this room as a polling place where people would actually could start feeding their ballots into the machine. It would be the same for both the primary and the general election. And I think most of you are aware, the state came up with some grant money to start updating election equipment. Most of it's at least 15 years old. We'd be getting different tabulators, which, that's the machine that sits on the box that the ballots go into. We're also looking at getting electronic rosters. So, it's basically an iPad. You can start typing in the person's name instead of flipping through a bunch of pages. Even the election day registration forms would actually be done all on the iPad itself. So, it prompts every question. So, it's not, you know, missing a line or something here, because it goes question by question, and then a sheet prints out. So, then we'd have the collection of the sheets. They are, no money has ever been set aside for updating election equipment. And with this comes software. A lot of this stuff, I sat through a demonstration. And with a machine sitting there, the one that I saw, if anything is flipped open on the machine, an alarm will go off, or the screen will go blank, or it gives you many different warnings, so nobody can tamper with the machines themselves. And it's just one of those security measures that they're trying to take. So, with these new machines, they're basically going to start kind of charging all the precincts that use them. So, in 10, 15 years, when these machines need to be replaced, or if the software needs to be updated, there will be funds available to do that. With this, basically, well, after talking to David, since we are the biggest city and we want to try and help out our constituents, we've, staff-wise, have basically said more than likely we'll, yes, take on this absentee role. And with that, next week, I will be out of the office most of the week at election training with all of our county people. So, do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. President. How much extra time are we talking about that you or, most likely you, will be spending per election, I guess?
Okay. I can only be open during our regular hours. We cannot have extended hours, because that was something.
Not weekends?
The only time that we would be open on a weekend is a Saturday before the election. And it's from 10 to 3. With this already being set up as a polling place, that's the last time that we would need to set that up, basically. And this would be the only location we would have open during that time. And this would be the only location we would have open during that time. When I figured out the budget for this year's election cycle, I did figure in election judges here, so their time has already been accounted for. And at this time, I just did a week out, or the seven days out of, from the election. So up until then, it'll be just us up in the office. The primary, I really don't see there being much of anything. And I think this is, would be a good year to do it, with it being kind of in between a presidential election, but we still have a governor's race this year, so it still might get pretty interesting.
And then the machines, currently, if we have an on-cycle election, we don't pay the county, but if we have an off-cycle, we pay to use them, correct?
Actually, when we did our special elections.
I guess when we did, when we were off-cycle for general, for our elections, I think we had to pay.
And now everything is on the general election.
Right. So how much are they anticipating charging?
That, right now, the estimate that I've received was $1,200 per precinct.
Per precinct, so it's $6,000.
Yep. I'm not 100% sure when I'm going to get concrete numbers, and I'm not quite sure. All I've been given is just estimates. I have not been given anything on how that was determined. I think they're still trying to work that out. So as soon as I have more concrete information, I will definitely be sharing that.
Okay. Thank you.
One of the things that was shown in the 2010 census, we have two groups that are, exceed the census amounts. The 18 to 34-year-old, we have more people in that age group. That might be because of the tech school. But we also have more senior citizens, and I think it's very important to at least do it for the city. And we have students coming home. They're going to school all over the United States. We have people in the military. And we have people who are going out to west, go out early out west. They go to Florida, they go to Texas, they go many other places. They are, a lot of them not real old seniors. They might be 55. It depends what purpose you're talking about. But one thing that you will find is that the, the reason that we have so many seniors in East Grand Forks is that we have three clinics. And one of the things that you'll notice if you drive around all the clinics, there are a lot of people in East Grand Forks that work at the clinics. Some of the MDs high-tailing over Grand Forks, they do the same thing in Fargo-Moorhead. But it, it, something is beneficial. And Nancy could probably tell you, the other thing we have is a bigger percentage of apartments in most communities of our size. Grand Forks is really an exception.
Do you have a question for Megan at all?
Pardon?
Do you have a question for Megan?
Absentee voting?
No, I think that the big thing is for the locals.
Wonderful. Mr. Vedder?
But that's the history of it.
Thank you. The question I would have, I know that some of the townships are up in arms about the $1,200 fee, that's a big hit on their budget. I just want to make sure that the county's got the authority to assess that fee to us, and that it isn't in-state statute that they're supposed to run the elections already anyway without any fee to us. So we just need to do some research there.
Absolutely. And I know that some of the townships are doing research on that as well. And I know that they are looking at different ways on possibly getting that rate reduced. A lot of the townships in the area are less than 500 people, and when you're less than 500 people, that gives you a few exceptions to some of the things that are needed, but for the size that we are. But no, I can definitely look into that and, and see what I can come up with.
Megan, if someone wants, if they're in Arizona or whatever, and they want an absentee ballot sent to them, would they contact you or the county?
They could con, it, with us, if, if they are a resident of East Grand Forks, they could contact either.
Then when you send that out, does, like, say you get 500, does the, is the posters and stuff reimbursable, or is that by the county, or is that?
Well, I haven't gotten that far at this point, but right now, like, they're trying to work me into the server, so then I can see if, did they call and request it or whatever. I think a lot of the people who do travel south are already used to contacting the county for absentee ballots and stuff. I don't foresee that changing.
Until they meet you, or whatever, then they're going to be like, well, I want to, I want Megan to take care of it.
But no, you know, that's one of those things that, I know they're going to be, there
was, with us having a machine here, the rent for the machine was going to be five grand. Well, that is going to be covered by the county. They're going to kind of consider this their additional polling place, so we don't have to pay for that at this time. But, you know, if, if I send it out, I send it out right now. I guess I haven't gotten that far into, I, but I want to.
Megan, you've been doing a good job on it. I know that, so.
Can anybody else have anything?
Unrelated?
It's not on the agenda?
It's on the agenda. Before, we would get a look at voting on whether to pave that lot by the VFW. Somebody who has a connection to the VFW should see if they might help do some fundraising to pave that. You know, the VFW does have access to some charitable-type dollars, and maybe they would be willing to help with the paving of that.
One other thing, Earl Hugan with MPO sent out a memo, I think it was this week, did you get it, Clarence, regarding Tiger funding? They've added a bunch more money, so staff may want to look into if we're eligible. I think, projects up to 20 million. See what, if there's anything that we have that is eligible and worth competing for.
Entertained a motion to adjourn. Who by Grassil?
Second.
Second by Vedder. On favor, say aye.
I want to say something.
Would you need an answer?
We have a meeting here on Thursday for proposed route changes, so if you, for transit, so if you know anyone who is interested, just discussing the night route, the changes to the routes, we will have some sort of equipment here, where you currently ride the bus or want to ride the bus, you can tell them where you want to start and where you want to end, and it'll tell you exactly how to get there in how many minutes.
Cool.
We have a lot of seniors.
Ballot in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Most carried means adjourned. Sorry to answer you, I didn't see it.
No, that's okay. Little people.
Did that steering?
What steering committee?